Here.
Rojas?
Here.
Beach Olsen?
All right, next we should stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, we're now moving to presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the Planning Commission on any item not on the agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any commissioner may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters related to Planning Commission will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification or report. Any oral communication from the public? Seeing that there is none, oral communications from the Commission? Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Chair Dorantes-Polito. This morning, we had our Vision Zero Task Force meeting, and I wanted to share a little bit of information and some observations from that meeting, and also of my own opinion. So as we go forward with plans to implement a bike-share program in the city, and that bike-share program will be done throughout the county, including the city of Watsonville, which is quite innovative, actually, for a bike-share program, to be in a city that doesn't have a university or kind of a trendy young -- we have a young population, but more like university crowd kind of population. It's really innovative for us to be getting this bike-share program. We need to look towards making our city safer and friendlier for what is known as active transportation. Now, active transportation includes all forms of human-powered transportation, from skating and scooting to bicycling, as well as using a wheelchair. Through the work of the Vision Zero Task Force, we earned our Bike-Friendly-City Bronze Level Award in this past December, and we will be applying for our Bike-Friend -- sorry, our Walk-Friendly-City Award this year. With these awards, so the applications are quite extensive, and with these awards, we have a blueprint for making our city more friendly for active transportation. One of the biggest changes we can make into the city transportation network is to make active transportation safer, more desirable, and more equitable. It would be -- the best thing to do would be to improve the active transportation network and connectivity. So currently, we have some bike paths and some sidewalks, but the connectivity of getting people from one point to the other, one place to the other, would be a goal that we would have. Reconfiguring city streets to accommodate safe and robust active transportation infrastructure will encourage residents to choose active transportation when making trips around town. And I'd like to encourage people in the public, so residents of this city, to experience active transportation. Maybe make a choice to make a trip, a small errand, by active transportation, walking, biking, skating, scooting, once a week, twice a week. It would make -- you would feel what that experience is like from the active transportation user, as opposed to from being a driver. So it's a really different experience. Some things we can do to improve our active transportation network around town would be limiting parking to one side of a narrow street to allow for a wider bike lane, enforcing red curb, no parking zones, so people aren't parking in the bike lane or in the pedestrian right-of-way, and keeping sidewalks clear for pedestrians. Many of these route upgrades can be done inexpensively, with paint or bollards, and there are neighborhood traffic plans around the city, and things are being done to improve the active transportation network. By prioritizing safe, robust, active transportation routes, by reducing vehicle speeds, and improving sidewalk and bike lane connectivity, active transportation can become a safer and more viable choice for moving around town for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kammer. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Dodge.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening. It always feels good to be back in these chambers in person. I do want to take a moment to recognize Congressman Jimmy Panetta and all the efforts that he's been able to help the city of Watsonville. As due to redistricting, we have another -- he won't be representing the city limits of Watsonville anymore, but other areas of Santa Cruz County. I had the fortune to be able to conduct through the Cabrillo College Watsonville campus. A little tour with Congress member Zoe Lofgren, who is now currently running for the newest congressional district that will include East San Jose, Salinas, Watsonville, all the way down to King City. So there'll be some interesting changes that are going on in November, and I just wanted to acknowledge both of those Congress members and their willingness to be able to help us here in the city of Watsonville. There'll be some dividing issues that are coming up in our community. Not dividing issues, just controversial electoral issues pertaining to -- which has been active in the county with people that are active only in the trail option for the scenic trail through Santa Cruz County, or to be able to keep the rail option, which we had several -- a couple of demonstrations of electrical trains in our city previously. But the issue that I wanted to comment on tonight will be the challenge to the Measure U Urban Limit Boundaries, Urban Limit Line, for this city of Watsonville. I actually -- we have an issue with arts on our agenda this evening, and we'll be discussing it later, to be able to support the arts in our community through looking at fees and adjustments. But our city faces a challenge with limited growth, a lack of sales tax revenue, or we have sales tax revenue, the lack of extremely healthy sales tax revenue, and property tax. For those that might not be watching at home, that is how the city pays for itself. Limiting the opportunity for our community, a community, minority-majority community, to be able to have dialogue, to be able to disenfranchise voices of the youth and those who are ineligible to vote, we're not really truly having, my opinion, and this is my opinion, we're not truly having a dialogue or allowing those voices to be heard when we take this issue up in a future election in the corner of the -- later on in the year. I would ask those not to fall for the propaganda and the sentimental appeal that others will be reaching about protecting the sleuths. The city of Watsonville has been dedicated to protecting the sleuths for almost 40 years. Some of these things that are being raised, we need to be able to discuss as a community, how we want to grow, or if we don't want to grow, we will be limiting ourselves to being able to achieve the things that we want to be able to do, and to make this community a healthier place for our children and our grandchildren to remain here in this valley. I want to take the opportunity because I think that this discussion is going to come up, I believe, on the city council agenda on March 8th. There will be an issue addressing, whatever the issue will be called, it's repeal -- I mean, it's a -- it's a -- an election to be able to retain the urban limit lines. We have -- and if that does pass, then we need seriously look at the 300 acres called the Watsonville Municipal Airport, to be able to be able to house our community, to be able to meet our housing requirements, and to be able to fund the projects, such as art projects, that have an overall healthier effect for our community. Thank you for allowing me this time to address it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Comment? I forgot to excuse absent Planning Commissioners, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to bring it to your attention when we were done with the oral communications items. So if we're done, Madam Chair, there are two excused absences and one vacancy on the Planning Commission, so you would just make a motion to excuse those absent.
Thank you. Let's -- I make a motion to excuse the Commissioners that are absent. Can I -- sorry, do I -- I say anybody like to first motion? Do I have first motion?
You can make a motion.
Okay, I'll do the first motion. Sorry. And then Commissioner Kammer will second that.
And so before we vote on the motion, we'd ask for public comment, and then the vote can be taken.
Public comment on excusing -- on the motion of excusing the absent Planning Commissioners? Meaning that there is none? Oh, go ahead.
I have a question, and good evening, Madam City Attorney, who I haven't met yet, you know. Q. You know, when have we started doing this, affording motions to be able to require? Is this part of the Roberts rules that have been changed due to Zoom rules, or is this something that the city council will be doing at every meeting?
So this is -- thank you for that question. I just reviewed your bylaws, and this is a rule in your bylaws.
In which bylaws?
The Planning Commission bylaws. It's--
You're kidding.
Article 14. It's also on item number one on the agenda.
Oh, I see -- I see that. It's just being a member of this board for over in the last 20 years, this is the first time that I'm familiar with that. And so I was wondering if this is a procedure that the city council will be starting to do, because I would love to see that.
I don't know. Actually, this is the first meeting I've ever been to where I've seen this rule or requirement, so it's new to me, too.
Okay, maybe we can revisit at a later date, so we can be in conformity with the city council. But thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor?
We do have a second, Commissioner Kammer. After -- Commissioner Comment, check, roll call?
Dodge?
Yes.
Dorantes-Polito?
Yes.
Kammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, consenting the agenda of January 18th. Any public input on any consent agenda item? Seeing that there is none, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to accept the January 4th--
I'll second.
-- agenda.
First motion from Commissioner Kammer, and second motion from Commissioner Rojas.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify, I have on my agenda that it's minutes of--
Minutes, sorry, I apologize.
Minutes of January 18.
I meant to say that, I apologize. Thank you for helping me cross my Ts and dotted my Is.
Great.
Roll call on that?
Dodge?
Yes.
Dorantes-Polito?
Yes.
Kammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. We have item 5A nomination and election of Planning Commission Chairperson. It has come to our attention that we have a -- two absences and one vacancy, and bring it up to the public and the Commissioner to possibly move to continue -- move this item to continue to the April meeting, and before any -- yes, go ahead. I was going to ask for a public input first.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, are we going to do 5A and 5B together?
Yes, 5A and 5B, thank you. Yes, 5A and 5B, being that all elections, yes.
Right.
Chair and vice-chair election.
Great. So then the public comment would be on both five items, 5A and 5B, to the extent that we're only talking about continuing the item itself, not the item?
Exactly, yes, the item itself. Commissioner Dodge?
Oh, I support the idea. Is it appropriate for a motion to do that at this particular time, or?
Yeah, there was no public input, yes.
Then that would move that we continue to do some absences at the current -- well, I don't have to say that, but I would move that we move item 5A and 5B to our next Planning Commission meeting in April.
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodge and Commissioner Rojas? Roll call?
Dodge?
Yes. Where am I? Yes?
Dorantes-Polito?
Yes.
Kammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We will now be moving on to item six, Presentations and Reports, with 6A, Presentation of the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair Dorantes-Polito, members of the Commission. I'm Carlos Landaverri, I'm the Housing Manager. You usually see me on that side as the interpreter. Today, I'm going to wear a different hat, and I'll be presenting to you the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The state law requires that local governments prepare and file an annual progress report on any housing activities. The Housing Element Annual Report provides an overview of the housing developments that we see in the city. That includes planning applications, entitlements, permits, permits issued, any units that we complete, and it also provides a summary or a review of the housing element goals and any progress we meet during that year. New requirements also require that we report on progress if we see any streamlining applications under SB 35. We also have to list any surplus lands that we have available within the city, and we have to report on any leap or local early action planning funding that we use throughout the year. And I'll give you a little more details on that, and you also have some of those details in the staff report. So we'll start with the Housing Element Program Goals, as a review of 2021. So in 2021, we approved five homebuyer -- first-time homebuyer loans. Despite the pandemic and the housing crisis and prices and all of that, we were able to issue five first-time homebuyer loans. We also approved three affordable housing units that went up for sale. What's interesting, I'm going to use just one example so that you can see the level of activity of what that represents. One of those units was a senior unit in one of the villages. It was -- it's the lowest-priced unit in the city. It was a three-bedroom unit, senior unit, priced at $356,000, and we didn't have any pre-approved buyers for that unit. So the unit went up on the market on a Thursday. By Monday, our office had received close to 100 inquiries with qualified people ready to make offers on that unit. So I'm happy to report that at the end of the day, that unit went to a local teacher, retired teacher from PVUSD who had never owned a house in her life, and now she's the proud owner of that. But it just gives you -- it gives you an idea of the level of activity when we have just one unit for sale, and then we have to deal with all the inquiries and talk to people, realtors, lenders, just to make one sale. We also processed six housing rehab applications. Some of those homeowners are still -- they're still going through the process. We didn't produce anything last year, but we're working through those. Every year, or for every loan, every unit we sell or every loan we produce, we also have to service those loans. And so last year, we monitored over 350 affordable housing units, including all of the affordable housing units and all the first-time homebuyer loans that we produce, or even rehab loans. We have to make sure that people live there, that they occupy the unit, and they're following all the city rules. Last year, we also, and every year we do this, we leverage CDBG funds to assist low- and moderate-income residents, but also we use that money to assist parks and wrecks and court enforcement. And in parks and wrecks, just to give you a couple of examples, in the past, we have funded capital improvements at Ramsey Park, the new City Plaza restrooms, they're almost done, and our parks, true, they're here. So those are being funded through CDBG, and from last year, we're also funding improvements to our senior center. Continuing with housing activities, last year, we pre-qualified 13 families to be able to buy one of our affordable units, or to qualify for a down payment assistance loan. We processed 51 refinances or subordinations. Every time someone owns an affordable unit or they have one of our loans and they want to refinance that unit or that loan, they have to go through us. We have to approve that transaction, and we do that in order to make sure that the homeowners are getting a good product, that they won't see what we saw a few years ago, where people were taking money or using their homes as ATMs, and they ended up losing their homes. So we go the extra step to make sure that they have a good loan product and that they meet the city requirements. In that, and even when they refinance, or if they sell the home, or if they're almost done paying with their first mortgage, people can also call us and they want to pay off their city loan. So last year, we processed 41 payoff demands. Sometimes they just want to know how much they owe, and so we have to go through that. And to do that, we also have to go through the sales calculation for each unit, and every year, and especially now that the prices are going up, people want to know how much their unit is worth. So we processed 78 of those transactions. Because of the pandemic, as you are aware, we've had different programs to assist to local residents. So last year, through a state-administered program, through Housing is Key, and through the assistance from our office and local nonprofits, including CAP Community Action Board, Community Bridges, CRLA, and including COPA and a few others, we were able to assist 270 families from Watsonville to get rental assistance, for a total of about $2.2 million. In the court enforcement area, we supported those activities, and last year, they saw 374 cases. They processed almost all of them. Their backlog, it's just about 40 cases or so. Last year, we also did a lot of work with specifically two nonprofits, and you've seen those projects, Mid Penn and Eden Housing. They have two projects here, the one on Miles Lane and the one on Freedom Boulevard. So last year, they got, and this year, I should say, no, last year, they had all the -- most of their funding, including funding from the Joe Serna Farm Worker Housing Program and tax credits. So, and we supported those efforts. We have to do a local evaluation of those two projects and recommend those projects to the state for tax credit purposes, and I am happy to report that those two projects got funded to the tune of about $57 million. And we'll see construction on those projects pretty soon. We also, we've -- last year, we started doing a lot of work, and we continue working on mobile home parks. There is one mobile home park that has requested a rent increase, and to do that, we have an ordinance, and it has to go through the city manager's office. So our office has been assisting with that, and we continue to do so. All right, now to the -- for the juicy stuff. Development activity for 2021. So in 2021, we had four major projects that submitted applications, for a total of 223 units. Those -- all of those were approved. 124 units were entitled. Building permits, we issued 86 permits, and permits finalled, 25 total, most of them ADUs. So this year and the next year, we will see a high level of activity with all of the other permits being issued and more housing units being completed. And so out of all of those 223 units, 135 are considered very low. Those are -- those include our two affordable projects on Freedom Boulevard and Miles Lane, and also the units at the project on Main Street, 558. And here is, and this is something that we used to do with the annual progress report, we used to focus on just our RENA numbers, original housing. I forget the acronym now. Susie will help me. Yes. So as you may know, so we are -- this is our fifth cycle, and the cycle goes from 2016, it ends in 2023, and then we have to get our new housing element, and we'll get our new numbers, which are huge. But at this current cycle, we're required to produce 700 units, and this is -- here is the breakdown. And so including, or as of the end of 2021, the units that now get counted by HCD, they only included the units where permits have been issued. And so as of the end of 2021, we had a total of 302 units or permits issued that count for those RENA numbers. From 700, we still have 398 to go. The good news is, for people that have asked me, what do you think we will meet that number, and I'm very quick to tell them, yes, we will. We'll get very close to it. And so here is why I'm -- what I mean with that. And I'm going to move on to the next slide so I can show you. These are our current housing projects. 221 Airport, those permits were issued last year, and they're reported and they're counting in this RENA numbers. But 1482 Freedom Boulevard, the Miles Lane Project, and 558 Main Street, our Community Development Department is processing those applications right now. Those permits are expected to be issued soon, and we will be counting those units in our next year's progress report. And so if we count those, that's about 175 units, and if we add the level of activity that we have seen with ADUs, we're looking at about 200 units. So from 398, we're looking at about half. And then Sunshine Gardens, that and Hillcrest Estates, those two developments that are right behind target. right behind target, they've been entitled. Sunshine Gardens, they started construction and they've had some issues, as you may know. But we're hoping that they continue, or they resume construction. Hillcrest Estates, if they pull permits, or we issue permits within this, even, either this year or next year, we'll be able to count to those. And that, just in those two projects, we have over 200 units. And then 547 Airport, that's 21 units. So with that, we would be able to get to our 700 number or so. And if other developments come through, we'll be in good shape. Okay, so here's my wishful thinking hat. Well, some of these things are very logical, as you can see. If we look at, if we go by year, in 2022, we have three, four projects that will be under construction. And the wishful thinking for me is that they're all done by the end of next year. Also, with wishful thinking, if we get Sunshine Gardens to resume building this year or next year, and Hillcrest Estates. 547 Airport, as you know, they're going through a lawsuit, but we're hoping that that gets resolved soon and it gets, they, it gets constructed soon. And so with that, I'd like to end my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for staff report questions. Commissioner Dodge?
Thank you. Thank you for your report, and thank you for always the service and dedication that you bring to our community. Appreciate. You're talking about 700 units, and that, that slide you showed is in a three-year period for that number that's being allocated? And am I, am I correct, when we start talking about the number of units, and when is the necessary completion date on those?
So for our RENA numbers, the, because we, the, HCD counts the numbers of permits that are actually issued.
Right.
If we issue those permits within this year or next year, we'll be able to count them.
What other long-term growth plans does the city have to be able, to be able to address those kind of RENA numbers in the, in, in the coming years after that expires?
Oh, that's, that's for my planning folks.
I, I felt a cringe when I, when I said that. She knows where I'm going with it, so that's.
We all run for the hills, no. So what happens at the end of 2023 is the fifth cycle housing element, and it's an eight-year housing element cycle. We do know that we will be allocated somewhere over 2,000 units for the next housing element cycle. And then we will be working on, and what's due at the end of 2023 is our, our housing element update. So we will be starting on that later this year, so. And just to, to keep in mind that we don't, we are not required to build 700 units, because the city is not in charge of construction. We don't have control over what actually gets built. What we have to do is make sure that within the city boundaries, we can accommodate that number of units through rezoning, or allowing infill development, increasing density, which is one reason why we're, we're working on the downtown specific plan. So we have to be able to accommodate that number of units if developers choose to come in and market conditions allow for the construction of, of that number of units.
That's, that's great, that's, cause that's what I, I wanted to be able to, to look at the number of units that we're talking about now. But if we're also talking about comments that I raised earlier, because there's this stereotype that we have all kinds of infill land, and I've been enough city meetings, me and many others in this, in the audience, to know that our infill land isn't as extensive as people would like it to believe. So that while, while I commend what we're doing, and, and the city's been quite resourceful, it does concern me that the, the number of units and the amount of space that we have to be able to address it, how do we go into the next cycle? And so, I appreciate the background on this, and I'm sure that I'll be around for a while. Thanks.
And a lot of that will be, will be presented at next week's council meeting with the Urban Limit Line staff report and analysis. So stay tuned.
Yeah, I'm, what a guess.
Any more questions for staff? Commissioner Kammer?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Carlos, for your presentation. It's, it's a big job, and, and thank you for your translation services as well. I guess this is for the staff, planning staff. I wanted to ask about rezoning, because it is highly feasible to put this number of units in our, within our city limits. But what we need to realize in today's world is we need to increase density. It's, it's an imperative in every city. And it's also the right thing to do for climate change, because the further out we go from the job centers, the more people have to get to those job centers, and the more we expend emissions going into the atmosphere. So the more we can create density and maybe rezone some spaces, and I'm thinking about the Kmart area, for an example. And also, from what I see, we have a lot of land in this city dedicated to the vehicle. Not only road infrastructure, but everything from car washes, parking lots, just repair shops. We might need to rethink how we do land use planning in order to accommodate housing units for, for people. So I, it just would, I mean, I don't know, you don't have to answer that question, cause it's a big one, I know. But I, I really think it's possible, it's just that we need to really rethink the way we look at land use planning in order to meet these goals, and we do need to meet these goals.
Right.
And, and, but there are solutions for this. Thank you.
We're gonna tap you for the Housing Element Committee.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rojas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, and thank you, Carlos, for the report and all of those efforts. That's incredible. Are there any consequences of not meeting the RENA goals or targets?
Good question. So in the past, we haven't, they have, there haven't been any consequences, but going forward, we hear that they're, they're getting stricter. And so we'll see what happens with the next cycle and how things go.
It is, it's getting stricter. If, if you don't have a compliant housing element, you get, you do get dinged by the state, and.
Like a fine?
No, but what they, what they do is, is, as you probably know, the state supplies local governments with lots of different grants. And if you do not have a compliant housing element, if you're going for a parks grant or a grant for infrastructure, roads, anything like that, and you don't have a compliant housing element, you lose points, significant points. And so that's kind of, that's the stick. Yeah, and I, I only see it getting tougher in the future.
And then I just have one more question, Susie, for you. You mentioned the next cycle will be 2,000 units. Is that gonna be another eight-year cycle?
Yeah, they're eight-year cycles, and it'll be, yeah, over 2,000 units. And the reason that it's, it's jumping up so high in this next cycle is that they are not only planning for future units that are necessary to meet the, you know, future projected population, they are also including housing that's, that's needed now. So they're taking the current need and adding it to the future need, and so it's significantly higher. If we didn't have that added current deficit, I guess you could say, we'd have a very similar allocation to, to the current one.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kammer?
I, I don't know to whom to address this, but SB, it's SB 35, is that correct? Can you brief, can somebody briefly brief us on that one?
Gosh.
Okay, it's not brief. I mean, I know it facilitates housing development at the state level, but I'm not sure.
At the local level as well. It's a, it's a, it's a state bill. We actually did have the county's first SB 35 Streamline Project, which was the 1482 Freedom Boulevard project that went to council last year. But in, in, just really short, it, it reduces the environmental review that has to be done. It also requires that the city only review it ministerially and apply only objective design criteria, as well as objective findings. So it's really a mechanism to try and, and move housing projects forward faster, and that's for affordable housing projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of different caveats, so, but, and, and we were able to do that. That was Justin Meek's project, and it was, it went through in light speed, and they should be picking up their building permits very soon, cause they got tax credit financing. Both mid, the Mid Penn Project and Miles Lane got first round tax credits, and so they have to be under construction by the end of the month.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clarifying questions? No? Thank you for the staff report, Carlos. Very well done. Thank you. Now, no questions. Moving on to item seven, public hearings. 7A, Recommendation to Council on Two Ordinances Amending the Watsonville Municipal Code RE Regarding One, Updating Quimby Act in Lufy's. Two, Establishing Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fees. And Three, A Proposed Resolution Setting the Fees for Both Ordinances. Start with our staff report.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. Could we back to 6A? We didn't take public comment on that.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you.
Public comment on 6A.
Thank you.
Putting too fast on that. Being that there is none.
This, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Does this, in our agenda report, this recommends that we make a recommendation is, but I don't see that necessarily on the, on the agenda.
For 6A or for 7A?
For 6A.
There's no recommend, is there a recommendation for 6A?
I mean, the agenda report says recommended action that we recommend to the city council acceptance. I know I read these things, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Recommendation, action.
But it doesn't say in the agenda.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend the city council acceptance of the housing element and a progress report for 2021. Yes, which, I apologize, I didn't see it on the.
It's not, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
On the agenda. I apologize. Moving back. Sorry, today's a mess. I apologize.
You're doing great, you're doing great.
Being that there is no public comment on 6A, clarifying questions have been made. A motion to recommend the Planning Commission city council acceptance of the housing element and a progress report for 2021. Commissioner Rojas, first motion?
I'll say.
And Commissioner Kammer, second motion? Thank you.
Will we vote? Is that possible?
I, yes.
Okay, I just wanna give you. But actually, it's gonna be submitted, that's the form that's required?
To submit to the state?
It's, it's actually, what goes to the state is this whole multi-tabbed spreadsheet that we can't print for you.
No, that makes sense.
So what? You've got a summary that's nice and legible.
Thank you.
But I will say that the, there is a link to the actual reports, Tables A and A2, in the staff report.
Yes.
If you wanted to actually look at the, the tables.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report for 7A.
Oh, I, oh my gosh, I am so sorry. Where am I? Too.
I'm with you, wherever you're at, I'm, I'm with you.
I apologize.
We have a motion pending.
Motion pending, thank you.
Dorantes Polito?
Yes.
Kammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Thank you. Staff report. Okay.
Are you ready for us?
Oh, you guys are here?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Nick Kalabakib, and I'm the Parks and Community Services Director for the city of Watsonville. We have two staff reports for you this evening, the first of which is on our park impact fee study and proposed park impact ordinances and fees. And I'm here this evening, joined by one of my teammates, along with one of our consultants from NBS, and I'll allow them both to introduce themselves before we move on here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission. My name's Adriana Flores, I'm the Senior Administrative Analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department.
For the park impact fee study.
Thank you both. Okay. So the recommendation before you tonight for this particular staff report includes three different recommendations. So we recommend that the Planning Commission, first, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council, and this is a two-part recommendation, that the city council approve the Watsonville Final Report entitled Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study, dated January 18th, and prepared by NBS Government Finance Group. And secondly, adopt the proposed Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee Ordinance. Secondly, that the Planning Commission recommend that the council adopt a resolution recommending adoption of the proposed Quimby Act fee ordinance. And then finally, make a recommendation to the council that they adopt a resolution, adopting the proposed development impact fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreation facilities. So essentially, to kind of clarify what we're asking for, for tonight, is, is that the commission recommend that the council adopt our impact fee report that was prepared by, by NBS, adopt two separate ordinances, and then finally, adopt the fees that we are recommending based on those ordinances and that report. And this will become a little bit more clear as we move forward through the presentation here. Lots going on and lots of moving parts. Okay, so to give you a background on our existing fees, and these are park impact fees, our, our fees were first, first established in 1974, and they were last reviewed and updated by our city council back in 2008. So it's been about a decade and a half since we've, we've reviewed these fees and taken, taken a look at what we're charging and compared those to what's happening in terms of development in our community, along with rates of inflation and so forth. In terms of what's been collected over the past 20 years through our existing fee, since fiscal year 2000 and 2001 to, to last fiscal year, about $3.6 million came into city coffers to, to help support this fund. And we've, we spent about $6.8 million. So to kind of give you an overview of how these funds are spent, they're, they're really intended to be used for the development of either new parks to support growth in population, or to support the expansion or renovation of existing parks so that they can accommodate greater use. So the, over the past 20 years, we've used these funds, that, that $6.8 million, for the buildout of Frannich Park, for the remodel of Callahan Park, and then to build the Ramsey Skate Park that you see pictured on, on your screen right now. If you average that $3.6 million over the past 20 years, it equals to about $227,000 per year, although that, that number obviously has fluctuated kind of year by year. per year, although that, that number obviously has fluctuated kind of year by year based on development that has, has come to life here in the City of Watsonville. To kind of put that into perspective and talk a little bit about what our current needs are across our system, if you look at our existing park system along with our, our recreation facilities, in today's dollars, we estimate that our deferred maintenance log is, is over $20 million. And that, that includes everything from the need to replace playgrounds to upgrade surfacing around playgrounds, to, to renovating restrooms, replacing the dock at Pinto Lake. All those types of things are included in our, our current estimate of deferred maintenance. The, the playground that's pictured in this slide here is the existing playground at Ramsey Park. And this is, I think, a great example of how many of our playgrounds look across our whole system. They're in a state where, I mean, this playground in particular, that it's so old, they don't even make parts for it anymore. So there's, there's pieces of this playground that are just missing and non-replaceable because it's, it's that, it's that old. In addition to, to the backlog of deferred maintenance needs that we have in our parks, we also face what we've really been, been calling out as inequitable access to, to park space. And this has really been highlighted through the pandemic as, as our community, and many communities like ours have, have, you know, sought to, to find our park spaces as, as spaces to, to be outdoors and socially distanced and participate in, in positive, healthy activities outdoors. To put that, to kind of put that inequitable access into perspective, our residents have access to about two and a quarter acres of parkland per thousand residents. Our, our existing general plan calls for five acres of parkland per thousand residents. And so we're about halfway to our, our old general plan. And the national average is, is 10 acres per thousand residents. So when you, when you compare where we are to where we should be in the general plan and to where most cities are, we're a far cry from, from where we, we need to be. Additionally, if you, if you look at the fact that Watsonville has about 143 acres of parkland that we maintain and compare that to the City of Santa Cruz's 1,700 acres of, of parkland for a city of similar population, I mean, I think that just really underscores the, the disparity that we face on a daily basis in terms of access. And these historical and systemic inequities really have a direct relation to individual and community health and, and well-being. So the purpose of this update and this, this kind of revamp of our fees is, is really twofold. It's first to update our city ordinances to make sure that we're in compliance and create parity with current state legislation, including looking at, at making sure that we're in compliance with legislation that will go into effect in July of this year as well. And part of that is, is, is adjusting our fees so that they are assessed on a square footage basis versus, versus per bedroom. And then it's also to modernize our, our fee structure to, to be able to help increase revenue that supports the expansion of, of access to quality parks and recreation space throughout our community. This, this presentation and our, and our, our recommendations are also in compliance or support the council's priorities and objectives as you see listed on the screen. And with that said, I'm going to hand things over to Joe from NBS to walk us through the next set of slides.
Moving the slides from here. Okay. This, this slide I want to go through quickly, just a quick outline of the study process. Starting from the lower left, we started by compiling data on existing and future development. And then above that, determining the existing levels of service for parks and recreation, community and recreation facilities. And that, that existing level of service, there's a, there's a law that was passed this past year, AB 602, that, that more or less mandates that impact fees must be based on the existing level of service unless you can justify otherwise. And nobody's really sure yet exactly what that means in practice. So I, I think we're well advised to stick with, using the existing levels of service as the basis for the fees, which is something we normally do anyway. Then we, we have to estimate the costs. We're using replacement costs for, for land and improvements. There's a step that's kind of missing here, I guess, which would be to, to calculate a cost per capita based on the existing population and those, those replacement costs. And then on the upper right, we establish a population per unit for, for different types, different classes of residential units, use the cost per capita multiplied by the population per unit, and that gives us the in lieu for Quimby or impact fees per unit. By the way, that footnote that's on that slide shouldn't be there, so I apologize for that. Okay. I guess I am in control now. All right. So there, the study really addresses two classes of, of parks and recreation development fees. The first is fees under the Quimby Act, the fees in lieu of, of land, of parkland dedication. So the Quimby Act predates the mitigation fee act. It dates back to the 70s, so it was in place before, really before impact fees became widely used. And it addressed specifically acquisition of parkland from residential subdivisions. It's part of, part of the subdivision map act. So the, the requirement is either dedicate land or pay fees in lieu of dedication. And there's some choices the city, to, to a large extent, has a choice, although for small projects, city can't require dedication of land, must, must only impose fees in lieu of dedication. And the other class of fees we're talking about are impact fees, which are in, in California are governed by the mitigation fee act. And they can be used for a wide variety of different types of facilities. So in this case, we're talking about several things. Park improvements, certainly, community centers and recreation facilities, which are also addressed in the study. And we're also providing for the acquisition of, of land for, for residential development that does not include a subdivision and therefore is not subject to the Quimby Act. Okay, next slide. Thank you. So a little bit more about the Quimby Act, starting at the lower left. As I said, it's part of the subdivision map act. It applies only to residential subdivisions. So as, and I, I guess I pretty much summarized this already, the city or, or county may require dedication of land or fees in lieu of dedication. And the, the Quimby Act stipulates that therefore neighborhood and community parks only. And land dedication may not be required for projects smaller than 50 lots. Next slide, please. I think we skipped one. Okay. So this is just a, a bit about kind of the steps that, that you go through to, to determine the, I'm sorry, this is, this is the, the range of, of requirements that's allowed by the Quimby Act. The acreage, the, the ratio between park, park acreage and population can range from either, from three units, three, I'm sorry, three acres per thousand residents to five acres per thousand, depending on the existing level of service. But at a minimum, you can use three acres per thousand to establish the requirements under Quimby. So that would be point zero zero three acres per capita. A couple of takeaways about the Quimby Act. Now, we think Quimby Act is, is really the best tool that's available, and depending on, on what lawyer you talk to, it may be the only tool that you can use to acquire parkland from residential subdivisions. One of the advantages is that it allows you to use, base the dedication and fee requirements on at least three acres per thousand. In, in the case of Watsonville, the existing ratio was slightly below that, so there is an advantage to the city in, in using it. And it does give you some flexibility on how the fees are, the in lieu fees are spent. They can be used, they're based on land costs, the amount of the fees, but they can be used to improve or rehab existing parks, which is also an advantage, we think. The formula is fairly simple. It's the acres per capita standard, that's the formula, acres per capita times the cost per acre times population per unit gives you a, a fee per unit for the in lieu fee under Quimby. Now, below that, in the example, there, there's an act, a, a calculation of an actual cost per unit. But Watsonville's Quimby ordinance sets forth that the amount, that, that the value of the land that the fee is based on is determined on a case-by-case basis, depending on the value of, of the land in, under the project that's being assessed the fee. So this is a hypothetical example, and as you'll see when we get to the tables, what we've, what the proposed ordinance would do is establish acres per unit requirements rather than fees per unit. And then that, that acreage requirement can be converted into fees based on the value of the land under the project. Now, moving on to impact fees, both for parks and for recreation facilities, this is just a quick summary of the different types of things that they can be used for. And as I've said, construct park improvements, construct community centers and recreation facilities. We also included in this study the acquisition of maintenance, park maintenance vehicles and equipment. And then the, the other thing, as I mentioned, is acquiring parkland from projects that don't involve a subdivision. Now, the mitigation fee act and, and some constitutional case laws set, set out some requirements for, for impact fees that are a little bit different. The Quimby Act has its own set of rules. Impact fees operate under a somewhat different set of rules, although conceptually, they're very similar. So the, the three elements of the nexus that, that we use to determine whether or not impact fees are justified, I should say that the courts use to determine whether impact fees are justified when they're challenged, is that development must create a need for the facilities to be funded by the fees, development must receive a benefit from the facilities that are funded by the fees, and the amount of the fee must be proportional to the impact that's created by the development project. And that's, that's why we look at different, at population per unit for different classes of residential development so that the, if we're using population to represent demand, then more people means more demand and therefore the fees are higher if there are more, more people associated with a particular type of unit. Impact fee calculations, as I said earlier, we base, in this case, and typically, we use the existing level of service. And for parks, that's the existing ratio of park acres to population. For community centers and recreation facilities, we typically, and in this case, use the, the per capita value of existing facilities because there's such a variety of different types of facilities, cost is really the common denominator, and it's hard, hard to do it any other way. And also, like the Quimby Act, in lieu fees, impact fees are applied as a fee per unit of development. So this is, and Nick mentioned earlier that, that the city's current fees, park impact fees are based on number of bedrooms. And so the city was sort of ahead of its time, I guess, in a way, because when we started this project, the city directed us to look at using unit size rather than the number of bedrooms. And it, as we were going through the process, AB 602 was adopted, which, starting July 1st, will require that approach. So, so fortunately, we, we got ahead of that, thanks to the city staff. So this, this is a breakdown that we used for dwelling unit sizes. Now, this would vary from city to city because each city is different. But this, this was based on information that we had about, mainly about the, the mix or, or the distribution of units by number of bedrooms. And we, and we converted that into a square footage. We looked at a lot of, a lot of data from the assessor and other sources to try to get, get a sense of what made sense in terms of square footage related to the number of bedrooms. And as you can see, this, we ended up in the right-hand column with a population per unit for each of these unit sizes. And that's, that's what the fees end up being based on. We, we have a cost per capita, which is multiplied by the population per unit to get to the fees. And this is a summary of the, the fees, although the, I should point out, the, the park inlet, the second column, which is, it's headed parkland in lieu fee, is actually, those are, are acreage requirements. That, that's the number of acres per unit that's required, since the fee can't be calculated for the, that, that's the Quimby fee. And, and the actual in lieu fee can't be calculated until you have a, a project to work with. So that column is acreages, but, but the others, the parkland impact fee, which would be for non-subdivision projects, the park improvement impact fee, and then the community centers, recreation facilities impact fee, those are all fees, cost per unit. And you see the total on the right is for the three columns where we actually have the fees. So I don't, I don't think we need these next two slides. I don't think they really add much to the discussion. They're nice looking, but, they're pretty, but we don't need to talk about them, I guess. I think we've covered it pretty well. So that's it for me. I, I think Adriana is going to go take it from here.
I, I have a question. Can I?
Okay, I'm going to talk about the proposed fees. So the fee study just presented by NBS and Joe establishes the maximum allowable amount that the city is able to charge. We realize that adding any fees to development has a potential to affect development in the city, and so staff is recommending that the fees be adopted not at the full rate, but at 40% of what is allowable. Also, we are recommending that these fees be increased by 10% every two years with our biennial, biennial budget, beginning with fiscal year 2023, 2025. By taking this approach, we'll have a gradual increase in fees while bringing the city's fees in line with other jurisdictions that have recently updated their park fees. This slide shows our current fees that are charged on development for park in lieu fees. As you can see currently, we only charge parkland in lieu fees, and these are currently charged per bedroom. As Joe noted, we're moving to square footage. This slide shows what was based on the study, the maximum allowable fees that could be charged. If we look as an example at the 900 or above 900 to 1,200 square foot line, we see that the parkland impact fee, park improvement fees and community recreation impact fees are included. And with total here, 16,503. The difference between what we currently charge, which was the 3,000 in the, in the previous slide, and the maximum is 13,503. This is if we were to charge the maximum allowable. The parkland in lieu fee is not included in this total as this is listed in acres per unit, and this fee, as Joe explained earlier, is based on the fair market value. So that would be added as, as an additional amount to this total. What we are proposing is that we, that we go by this chart, which is not the full amount, but 40% of the maximum allowable. Using the same example as before, the greater than 900 square feet to 1,200, the total would then be, right here, 6,601, with a difference there of 3,601 from what we currently charge. In this example, the park in lieu fee also would be, would be added to that total. We'd also like to note that the fee is capped at 2,100 square feet. So after that, any dwellings that are larger than this, the fees would be eliminated. The financial impact that these fees have are estimated and based on what the population is projected to be through 2045. The proposed fees would increase average annual revenue from 227,000 to 465,000. The actual revenue would, of course, depend on development and what projects the city can assess impact fees on. For example, in fiscal year 18. For example, in fiscal year 1819, the city collected 27,636, and in fiscal year 1920, they collected 30,689 in park impact fees. We have seen, or our staff has noticed a big decline, and we attribute that to mandated exemptions to accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Therefore, any increase to the average revenue each year from the proposed fees is likely, is likely going to be less. These fees alone are not enough to completely address our parking equities and deferred maintenance needs. We need a more significant funding source, not only to sustain our current service levels, but also to accommodate future growth in the city. As we stated before, we are recommending that the fees be increased by 10% every two years, in line with the city's biennial budget cycle, and it should be, it should be noted that per California law, this nexus study and fees associated with it have, would have to be updated every eight years. This is a schedule of recommendations, starting today with, with this body before, and this item before you, followed by the Parks and Recreation Commission next Monday, the 7th of March, and then taking both recommendations to the city council at their next meeting on March 8th. So again, our recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the City of Watsonville final report, Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study, dated January 18, 2022, prepared by NBS Government Finance Group, that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee Ordinance, and adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed Quimby Fee Act ordinance, and that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed development impact fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreational facilities. And this concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation. Questions for the Planning Commission, clarifying technical questions? Commissioner Dodge?
Back earlier, the slide that you were, you were sharing with us, and you had, you had population-per-unit and that, and the fees that were based on, on that schedule, is that based off a current census data fee, so that that's a current chart of what the city? Yeah, and I mean, because you have population-per-unit and estimated population-per-unit, which totals out to about the city's population size, 50,000. Am I, am I correct? Is that where those numbers are based on?
It does, it is calibrated to the city's current, current population.
Current population? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be, wanted to be confirmed what numbers that it is that we're talking about, we're working with. And so then, my second question is pertaining to the presentation where, where you were making reference to, I'm so sorry for just pointing at my, my head. You were talking about 600 square feet, and that's, that's usually an ADU unit, correct? And so then you're making reference to the, the fees that are currently being, the state legislation allows for exemptions to A, to certain ADU units that fall under 600 square feet. I don't know if there's a square footage limit, but we're, but basically, that's kind of off the chart in that category. Am I not correct?
Yeah, well, I, I think you are correct, so if, if that unit, or if we're looking at a unit that is an ADU, that is, that falls in that, under that category of less than 600 square feet, then my understanding is that it would be exempt. But I think if you think about a scenario where, you know, maybe you have a 600, or less than square, six, less than 600 square-foot apartment in a, in a larger complex that's not an ADU, then it would be subject to these.
Okay, that's, that sort of is the direction where I was, was going, in particular that, since we're talking about housing units in high density and other things like that, then that becomes different with apartment or complexes or high-density residential as opposed to ADUs. Thanks for actually reading these things, I appreciate you answering my questions.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Rojas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, staff and consultant, for your presentation. I just have a few questions. I wanted to understand, so where the, the staff is recommending, and I'm looking at number two, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed Quimby Fee Act ordinance, I'm trying to understand, are we being asked to recommend, are we amending an existing, the way in which we currently practice the Quimby Act, or is this a new ordinance?
Correct. So for the Quimby ordinance in particular, it's, it's a recommendation to repeal the existing ordinance and replace it with the one that's in your packet.
Okay.
For the, the Park Development Fee Ordinance, that one is, is a brand-new ordinance that we're proposing.
Got it, thank you. And then my next question is related to the, the 10% increase that was mentioned, so is there, is that in perpetuity, or is there, will that, will that end at a, sunset at a certain time when we reach the 40% maximum?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So that, so that's what we are proposing, that we will recommend to the council moving into the future. The fees that are before you tonight are what is being proposed on the screen, or what's on the screen right now. What it would take to implement that 10% increase each year is for the council to adopt that 10% increase along with the adoption of, of each biennial budget. So in the recommendation tonight, that, that particular recommendation is not included, because it, because it would, it would have to be implemented and adopted by the council at, at each adoption, or at each biennial, biennial budget adoption, if that, if that makes sense. Oh, yes, okay, okay. Thank you for that prompt. Regarding your question about, about the, the cap, so basically, if, if the council were to adopt a 10% increase every two years with its annual or biennial budget adoption, we, we wouldn't be able to go further than, than eight years out, because, because at that eight-year mark, we would have to conduct and approve a new study. So basically, we've got the opportunity to, I mean, if the council approves our recommendation at each biennial budget cycle, to increase what is being proposed tonight by a max of 40% before we get to the point where we would need to redo the study. So basically, if we, if the plan is, is played out the way that we hope it will, and that the council, we hope the council will at each biennial budget cycle, we'll, we'll never get to that 100% fee, we would, we would get to a max of 80%.
Thank you. Another question I have is regarding that 10%, so the financial impact on page six, the projections that state that the revenue, the annual revenue will go from 227,000 to 465,000, does that include, is that, does that based on an assumption of the 10% increase?
No, so that's based on the, the proposed fees, starting at a 40% of the maximum.
Oh, okay, so you could even see more revenues, potentially, if the 10% goes through, okay? And then I did want to make a comment, I don't know if you have time to prepare something like this for the other presentations, but this financial impact session, like, section, I would have loved to see, like, some kind of chart that shows the change in revenue, the increase in revenue in comparison to, like, the deferred maintenance balance, I mean, and projections and all that, just to kind of show, like, that you're still, even passing these fees, you're still short, right, is what you said. If you can demonstrate that, like, visually, I think that would be really impactful. And then my other, oh, my last comment is, or question is, for the new impact fee, if it's passed, when is that assessed? Like, is that, is that assessed through, like, when someone applies for, like, a building permit, or how does, like, when does somebody pay that fee?
I'll defer to Cezanne on that one.
You were doing so well. Yes, so generally, impact fees are due when, when a developer pulls the building permit.
Yeah, those are all my questions, thank you so much.
Any other technical or clarifying questions? Commissioner Kammer, thank you.
I just have a quick question. Does the, the parkland ratio, does that include the slough trails as well?
It does not include the slough trails.
So it's specifically, there's, there was a list of, I can't remember which page it's on now, oh, here, it's page 4-2, there's a list of existing community center and recreation facilities, it just includes those?
Include, well, I, I think the, the list of facilities that's in your report, well, there's, there's two of them, there's one that lists all of our parks, I believe, and shows, shows the acreage, and then there's another list that, that lists our actual recreation and community centers. So what's on that list of park spaces only includes our, our parks and not necessarily the, the kind of open, open slough areas. We've kind of debated back and forth, kind of internally and also externally, about how to account for our slough trails, because although there's access to the trails, there's not access to actual sloughs, so it's, it's kind of difficult to figure out how you account for that kind of amenity. We've had some great conversations with the Trust for Public Land, actually, about that, and, and about, you know, how we account for the acreage of a park space and open space that we have in our community.
Yeah, it could, because, I mean, it's, it's, I'm sorry, but it's appalling how little park space we have per resident, and, and we need it, for sure. We have a lot of multi-res in this city, and we, and we definitely need that space, so I, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other clarifying, or Commissioner Rojas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Kammer's question made me think of another question I had. So you know that the, the, the data point that you showed in comparison between the City of Santa Cruz and the City of Watsonville? So for the City of Santa Cruz, does that include the beaches?
It includes, yes, because, because they are considered, well, they are, they're under the jurisdiction generally of, of the Parks Department, and they are considered kind of open, open space, park spaces that are accessible to the public.
Okay, that's what, because I was like, gosh, why is this number so big? And I'm like, okay, and then I was thinking, maybe the forest, but then the forest is outside the city limits, I think.
Well, there, there is some of that.
But the beaches, okay, there's the forest and the beaches, okay.
Right, yeah, yeah. Because they have De La Vega Park, you know, that includes the golf course and, and some of that forested area, and there's spaces like that that they have that we don't.
Thank you. Any other?
Great. Question for, oh, sorry, a public hearing on this matter?
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify, you're gonna open public hearings?
Open public hearing, yes.
Seeing that there is none, I have a question to our city attorney. To move on to the next, is it, do we, are we doing motions for each resolution, or is it, is it just one package? Is it a resolution for number one, 1A, 2, 3, et cetera, et cetera? I'd be happy to answer that question, but first, let's close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Being that there is none, I'm closing the public hearing.
Okay, now with that.
Question, thank you, thank you.
So it is, I would recommend that we do the resolutions one at a time.
Okay.
In the order that staff has proposed, and if we can have staff put up that last slide on the recommendations, then Planning Commissioner, who, once you've finished deliberations, is ready to make a motion, they could just read, and, you know, just go one by one, do the first motion, we take, we get a second, take the vote, and then move on to the second motion, and so on.
Thank you. Great. Deliberation on any of the resolutions presented before we?
I, I, I just really, before, before we move on these items, I just, staff commented that, that even, that they're, that they're, they're aware that any fees to have a defect on development, and so I understand, I believe that's the intent, to be able not to have it at the maximum 100%, that's why we're looking at 40%, where, where we still fall short in the required amount. So we're, we're voting to play catch-up. Okay.
Thank you for that clarifying comment. Recommending the, adopt a resolution recommending from, that the city can, council approve the City of Watsonville final report, Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Study, dated January 18th, 2022, prepared by the NBS Government Finance Group. That's one, right?
Making the motion.
And adopt the proposed Parks and Recreation Development Impact Fee Ordinance. That's one.
Make it a motion.
Commissioner, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Rojas?
I'll second.
And Dodge will second. Thank you. Second resolution, adopt the, sorry, public comment, right? On that motion? Thank you. Now we vote. Rojas?
Dodge?
See.
Yorontis Palito?
Yes.
Kammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to the second recommendation, to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed Quimby Fee Act ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed Quimby Fee Act ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you. Deliberation? Yes?
I would like to see it be really, maybe clarified here, that we're repealing the existing one, how it was clarified by staff, because to me, this is not clear, what, what the motion is. I don't know if that, if that's possible.
Can we add that to the?
Okay.
That says what it's doing in terms of repealing the prior ordinance, and I'm looking at the package now.
Could you state where that is for, for our friends at home?
If you, if you look at your packet and move past the report from NBS, the next page is the resolution for the Quimby Act fees, and in the title of the resolution, it speaks to repealing the current ordinance and replacing it with the, the attached proposed ordinance. If you, if you can't find it, it reads, "A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Watsonville recommending that the council repeal Article 2 of Chapter 6 of Title 13 of the Watsonville Municipal Code in its entirety and replace with a new Article 2 entitled 'Quimby Parkland Dedication and Fees in lieu.'"
Thank you very much, I feel more comfortable hearing it from our city attorney, no offense.
Could you clarify the page number on that? Oh, is it where it says rescinds Article 5 and 6 of Chapter 6?
Correct, repealing articles is what he's, I believe that's what he's.
Is that what the Quimby Act ordinance is? Article 5 and 6 of Chapter 6 of Park Development Impact?
I apologize, I'm not finding where staff has indicated that, so maybe they could just bring it to me, that'd be great.
Oh, here it is, okay, I found it.
It's this one, right?
Yeah. I don't think we have the same resolution. So we, I don't have that resolution in my package.
Yeah.
So you may not have that resolution. No, this is different than the one I have in my package. It says, entitled Park Development Impact Fees and Repealing Articles 5 and 6 of Chapter 6.
Yeah.
It says repealing.
Okay.
Finding that we located the form where the impact fees and repealing Articles 5 and 6 of Chapter 6 was located, it's cleared up. Commissioner Rojas?
Yes.
Right, so now I can answer the question. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. So, yeah, it was, it was hiding. So if you look in Section 2 of the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Watsonville recommending that the city council repeal Article 2 Parkland Dedications and Payment of In-Lieu Fees of Chapter 6, Dedications and Reservations of Title 13, Subdivisions and Maps."
Subdivisions and Maps of the Watsonville Municipal Code in Its Entirety and Replace with a New Article Two Entitled Quimby Parkland Dedication and Fees in lieu." So in that resolution, Section Two, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council of the City of Watsonville adopt the ordinance and that repeals Article Two Parkland's Dedications of Chapter Six in its entirety and replace by the language and terms set forth in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by with this reference. And Exhibit A is the new Title Thirteen, Chapter Six. So by adopting the resolution, you're making the recommendation that the council adopt the ordinance, which in it, in it, on its own terms repeals the existing ordinance. Well, so, so was I.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
We're all in good company.
Thank you very much. I have no objections to proceed.
Thank you. Seeing that that was clarified, shall we pursue roll call?
Did we get a second? I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Did somebody second it?
Dodge seconded? Yeah. Barbara, Dodge seconded it?
Yes, Hammer made the motion and Commissioner Dodge seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Dodge? Dorantes Polito?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving to the final recommendation. Adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed development impact fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreational facilities. Do we have a motion? Thank you.
I'll second.
Rojas will second, well, sorry. Oh, a motion to adopt a resolution, the, the last, the final one. Adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the proposed development impact fees to financially mitigate impacts to parks and recreational facilities. Deliberation? Being that there is none, shall we proceed to roll call? Dodge?
Yes.
Dorantes Polito?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Proceeding to seven B. Discussion and Recommendation on a Proposed Ordinance That Amends the Watsonville Municipal Code by Adding Chapter Twenty Entitled Public Art Program Requirements to Title Eight Building Regulations. And we have a staff report.
Hello again. Again, my name is Nick Kalabakib and I'm the Parks and Community Services Director for the City of Watsonville. And with me is?
Adriana Flores, the Senior Administrative Analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department.
And the second report and public hearing that we have before you tonight involves the Watsonville Public Art Program and proposed percent for the arts development fee. So the recommendation associated with this report is that the commission recommend that the council adopt a new ordinance amending the Watsonville Municipal Code by adding Chapter Twenty entitled Public Art Program to Title Eight. So why are we talking about public art? According to the Americans for Arts, cities gain value through public art, including cultural, social, and economic value. And public art is really a distinguishing part of our public history and evolving culture. It reflects and reveals our society as meaning to our cities and uniqueness to our communities. It humanizes the built environment and invigorates public spaces as well as it provides an intersection between the past, present, and future, between disciplines and between ideas. Further, including to Metris Arts Consulting, through a report that was funded by the University of Florida, public art also helps to, helps with creating healthy equitable communities in spaces that create the conditions for all people to reach their optimal well-being, such as access to safe neighborhoods, good jobs, homes, and schools. And healthy equitable communities are places with strong social cohesion. And public art really plays a large role in creating that, that, that social cohesion in communities. So the purpose or, or why of this, this proposed ordinance and new fee are really to create several systems and cultural shifts. The first is, is to move away from kind of this, this idea or cultural norm of art for art's sake to a space of art as a vehicle to really create community unity, engagement, and, and well-being and create that social cohesion that, that we just spoke about on the previous slide. It's also to, to really position art in a way that we view it as a driver for economic development, which I think was spoken about earlier. And also moving from city government view as art as something that's kind of just nice to have, that makes our, our facilities look nicer, to something that, that is a must-have when we talk about planning and developing public spaces especially. It's also kind of a shift and move from access to, to art as a privilege for some who have the ability and means to, to access art, to access to art as, as a right for all in terms of creating more art in public spaces that can be viewable by, by anyone and everyone as they move about our community. To provide a little bit of a background on the city's history with, with public art, the first known point in time that, that we've been able to find where the council acted upon public art was back in 2004, when it developed and adopted a mural policy. Followed by 2010, when the council and the then Redevelopment Agency, or RDA, approved public art guidelines and appropriated $50,000 from the RDA to support public art. Over the next year, in 2011, the council and the RDA approved a two-year public art plan. However, we, we all know that shortly after that, in 2012, the RDA, all the RDAs across California were dissolved, along with the City of Watsonville's RDA. And with it, the, the public art plan and the funding that was attached to it that, that came from the former RDA. So we went through a long period of time where, that there really wasn't anything in place in terms of funding or, or, or kind of programmatically for public art here in the City of Watsonville, until about 2019, when our department was tasked with reviving the city's public art program. So when we went about this, this kind of public art program revival, we, we looked at it in, in basically two different phases. So Phase One, we implemented back in 2019. And we really focused on, on kind of recreating a, 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 a means for community-initiated public art projects. So what, what that means is, is public art projects that, that are not city-funded. So art that's, that's, that could be funded, for example, through private investments on, on, on private, say, say, commercial space or private residential space, through donations or, or through, through other kind of grant funding. The Phase One really created kind of a policy that allowed staff to approve public arts and, and a means to, to make sure that, that we, we had kind of some level of control over what was, what art was, was proposed throughout the City of Watsonville that's viewable for, viewable from public right-of-ways or in public spaces. So with, with that, that process, a fee was attached as well. There, there, that, that, there were exceptions made for that fee if projects were to be built within public spaces or in public buildings or in public rights-of-way. So the, the only time that those fees were applied were when art was proposed on privately-owned commercial spaces that were viewable from the public, from public spaces or public right-of-way. Phase Two involves city-initiated public art projects and that, and really kind of encompasses what we're here to speak about tonight. So I'm not going to go too far into that and then I'm going to pass things over to Adriana, who's going to take us from here.
Good evening, once again. This proposed ordinance, we're calling it Percent for the Arts. And it'll be Phase Two of the Public Art Program. It will establish guidelines for how the city will procure and implement public art. It will also create a funding mechanism to support the arts in the city, which is currently not, not in place. So what staff is proposing is to establish a city ordinance for the Watsonville Public Art Program that will establish a cultural fund. It will create a development fee that will go directly to this cultural fund and that the ordinance will define how the funds in this cultural fund are spent. These are types of art programs exist all over the country and world, including 48 cities in California alone. Locally, there are similar programs already in place in neighboring jurisdictions. And if you can see by this chart, the County of Santa Cruz has a similar program where they have a 2% cost of county-funded construction projects. The City of Capitola also has a 2% total building valuation or 1% in lieu to the city. The City of Santa Cruz has also a 2% for total eligible city construction costs. And down south here in the City of Salinas, they have a half a percent with a max of $50,000 per project or an annual max of $100,000 aggregate. The proposed fee will be a quarter of a percent of the total building permit construction valuation. This is not including the cost to acquire the land and would have a cap of $75,000 per project. It will apply to the following. For residential, it would be for new residential development projects of five or more units. And then for all others, it would be commercial, industrial, and public building development projects with a building valuation of $500,000 or more. And any remodels of the other, of any of the other two with a valuation of $250,000 or more. The fee would not apply to any nonprofit performing arts and museum spaces or remodels for earthquake rehabilitation. If the total allocation for a development project is less than $75,000, the applicant would pay their fee to the Watsonville Public Art Program allocation into the cultural fund. If the allocation for a project is $75,000, the applicant can choose one of the following four options. They can pay directly to the cultural fund. They can commission original artwork for the applicant's development project. They can donate artwork to the city. Or they can incorporate a cultural facility into their development project. The proposed ordinance says that the cultural fund could be used in the following ways. Design acquisition, commission, or installation of artwork by the city for preventative care and maintenance of artwork, to sponsor, support performing arts, for the acquisition and improvement of property for displaying artwork or conducting performing arts activities. It could also be used for costs associated with administering the public art program. And it could also be used for other city-produced cultural programs. The process for the use of the funds would be to develop a public arts master plan. This would identify community needs and funding for each possible use of funds. And this would be developed through a, a community engagement process. So we'd definitely bring the community in and take all that input. Also approval for city projects. They would go through an advisory committee or artist selection panel. Then they would be forwarded on to the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval. And if there were any denials or any appeals, they would go to the city council. Implementation of arts, of the arts master plan would be overseen by the Parks and Recreation Commission. This, this slide shows what, what impact this quarter of a percent fee would have. It equates to similar developer fees that are already in place. The yearly revenue would depend on how much development happens within the city that year. But as an example, this table shows the revenue that fee would have brought in if it was in place in 2021. And you can see in 2021, we would have a total of $416,500 in, in investment into the arts if that fee would have been in place. Staff has worked closely with both the Watsonville Artist Community and Developers to discuss these trends. To draft the proposed ordinance, Parks and Community Services staff held a stakeholder meeting on September 13th, 2021, with local artists and developers for initial review of the draft and to set the stage for a future community meeting. The stakeholder meeting was attended by 11 artists and developers. Following that meeting, a community meeting was held on September 30th, 2021 to inform the public about these efforts and to solicit additional feedback. There were 25 community members in attendance. Staff also reached out to a list of local developers with an invitation to meet with city staff to discuss the proposed ordinance and answer questions. Staff met with two developers. And staff from the Arts Council of Santa Cruz County provided technical support and consultation for the planning and implementation of these engagement efforts. And throughout these meetings, staff has received generally positive feedback. The positive feedback that we have received is largely in support of developing sustainable funding for both the visual and the performing arts, with an emphasis on uplifting historically underrepresented voices in our community and increasing the presence and funding for art and, for, and art forms created and led by underrepresented artists as well. This is the schedule of recommendations, starting today with the recommendation from this body, followed by, by the Parks and Recreation Commission next Monday, the 7th of March, and then taking both recommendations to the city council at a meeting to be determined. We're hoping to get on the agenda soon. So our recommendation tonight is that the commission recommend that the council adopt a new ordinance amending the Watsonville Municipal Code by adding Chapter Twenty entitled Public Art Program to Title Eight. And this concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the report. Opening it up for clarifying or technical questions? Commissioner Dodge?
Thank you for that presentation. I can see we've come a long way since 2008, that after a mural that was painted by a Norris, that artist that was here earlier, one of the city council members complained about the possible, too many images of the, the viandin of the Guadalupe around Watsonville. And so that's what, you know, let's, let's have, let's start from that position about why there was a mural policy put in place, not to encourage public art, but to monitor public art. I say that because also, and I appreciate the history that you gave us, because I was mayor of the City of Watsonville and chairperson of the Public Art Commission that was, as you stated in the report, set up by redevelopment, under redevelopment funds and taken away rather sharply. And with that, and at, at that time too, we were concerned about members of the community and members of the art community that I was involved with, was concerned about quite the extensive Eurocentric art that was appearing in some of the projects that were coming forward and not being reflected of the community. I know I'm on a tangent, but I'm going somewhere with it, so please. So we talked about, I, I'm, my curious is that, is that with this, when we're talking about with this proposal in front of us, that we're talking about an establishment of a cultural fund and also a community advisory, possibly a community advisory board in the slides that you set up. And I wanted to know, how do you, how do you kind of visualize how that, that process with the commu, cultural fund? Who oversees the cultural fund? And how do, how do members of the public, the diverse community have representation on that? You know, if I may ask?
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's a great question, a question that's come up quite a bit through our engagement process and development of, of the proposed ordinance. So I think our, our first call to action, once there's, there's money in the cultural fund, would, would be to create a public arts master plan. And, and the, the, the hope would be that we create that through a high level of community engagement and work with the community to determine what the goals of, of our public art program should be and how the money should be spent. The, the proposed ordinance outlines a number of different ways that we can spend the money, you know. And I think the slide that kind of talks about being able to use the funds for, you know, physical public art, so things like sculptures and murals and whatnot throughout the community, but also to be able to help support and uplift the performing arts, along with being able to use the funds for, you know, potentially a location for the public arts. So say like a public arts facility that can facilitate the display of visual arts, but also to be able to be a home for practice space and performing space for the performing arts. But I think what, and all of those types of needs, I think we've heard from the community are needs in terms of public art. But I think what is to be determined and can be kind of outlined through that master plan is, you know, where are the spaces, right? So like for murals and sculptures, you know, where are the spaces? What are potential art pieces that can go in those spaces? But, and then also, how do we divvy up the funds once they come in? And, you know, kind of by what percentage of those funds do we allocate for physical art versus, you know, for say, an art center versus to support performing arts performances throughout our community and so forth? And again, I think the answers to those questions will really be developed through input from our community and working with our artist community and our art groups to kind of help determine those things. And as we get through that, I think the way that that plan is kind of monitored and held true to what's written in it, I think are kind of twofold. For art that's commissioned by the city, at this point, what's being proposed is that we create kind of an arts advisory group that would take kind of first look at, you know, first of all, like our public arts master plan, but also any proposals that come through for for public art, whether that be physical public art or say grant opportunities that we could potentially create through the funding. And they would recommend, they would make a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval. Since currently, the Parks and Recreation Commission is kind of the advisory body that approves public art. One idea that's kind of been floated throughout this process also is the potential to develop a separate arts commission. So as this program kind of gets established and grows, I think if there's a need for a separate commission to, that deals, you know, kind of solely with art, then I think, then I think we, there's opportunity to kind of move in that direction. We haven't quite proposed that as of today because the commissions that we have for the city of Watsonville are established by the city charter. So it would require kind of a charter amendment to make that happen. So in order to kind of get things rolling, our thought and idea is to kind of work with current processes. And then as the need arises, we'll work through that larger process of potentially creating a new commission.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that because a lot of time we talk about public art, we don't necessarily talk about compensation for our artists and the people that ever put things together. And that's a part of peace that we like. Those that are privileged enough to have a source of income are tend to be able to apply for things, whereas struggling artists, and I know you mentioned that in the report, which is why my question pertaining to what the cultural fund or even what commission or body will be able to decide that, because historically in Watsonville, and I know it's a new Watsonville, it's post-pandemic, I already had COVID twice myself. It's a new world, I get that, you know. But if we haven't learned from some of the failures of the past in trying to engage a certain section of our community, I mean, we're talking, you're talking about dialogue amongst folks in a very collaborative process to be able to, I was commenting, we're not doing that with our land use, but that's a whole nother comment I made earlier. But it's very engaging to see that because we're talking about, even in your program here, you're talking about, in the reports, it was saying that a lot of cities create a public arts, they take a percentage for the art ordinances rather than adopting a policy program. How do you say it? Rather than adopting a policy for the program separate from the ordinance. And those are the questions that I, I know I'm getting in the cart before the horse, so to speak, but I'm reading the report and I think that this is a, this is an issue that can only grow and enhance our community, but at the same time, we have to be able to explain to people that we're talking about development in our community, why another, I haven't never met a developer that isn't broke, you know. So like, it still intrigues me to be able to like, you know, it's another fund and another obstacle. And so I want to be able to have that documented in the record why we're going in this direction as to propose, as to counter those arguments. So I appreciate you giving me the time for me to be able to do those things and answering my questions about. I see that there's also, we talk about adopting a cultural facility into the applicant's development project. Can you give me, and answer me what that might, how you visualize that? Or how was that worded into? Because that was like, instead of a monetary contribution, it was, what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah, so the proposed ordinance includes the option for developers for projects that, where their fee would be seventy-five thousand dollars or above that cap. For example, they have the option to also include a cultural facility within their project. So it could be a space that performing arts could take place. For example, and the ordinance kind of defines what that looks like and how big that needs to be. Or it could also be a space to display kind of like a rotating, I'm blanking on what the word is, but like a rotating, kind of like rotating shows of visual arts, for example. So they could have, you know, art that's placed there for a certain amount of time and then it's replaced with other art. And if they do that, they could kind of account for a certain percentage kind of discount of the full fee that they do the city or would otherwise have to pay.
So there still could be compensation for artists that were involved in those kind of, my underlying theme here is compensation for the people in our community that are taking their time to develop public art.
Yes, yeah, definitely. I mean, if those types of facilities were built within a development, I mean, they'd have to be used for those purposes, obviously. And so, I mean, they could create spaces for artists to perform, which could include, you know, revenue that's brought in for those performances or for, you know, charges that artists charge for the display of their art or the sale of their art.
Well, let's not forget, I am assuming this includes performing artists, such as people that run sound companies and production companies, to be able to be compensated for their time too, because I'm just, it's always, public art is always referenced. And not always, and a lot of times it's always as free. And my concern, my concern in establishing a cultural fund is that it's used to be able to sponsor, dedicate, I knew you said some other words, to be able to assist the members of our community that create public art. But thank you for taking my questions.
Madam Chair. I do want to, I do want to address the commissioner's question about use of cultural fund account monies. And it is in the ordinance, as staff alluded to earlier, but I do want to specify that it does allow for expenditure of cultural fund account monies for the acquisition, purchase, commission, installation, et cetera, of public art. So that's in section eight point twenty, or eight dash twenty-one hundred A one.
Thank you very much. That's a concrete example of what it is that I was inquiring about.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, team, staff team, for the presentation. I just have a few questions. I wanted to actually, Commissioner Dodge's question actually prompted me to make another question, and that is, so for the, for the projects, okay, for the construction costs that could be offered in lieu of commissioning artwork in a public place, could the ordinance require that commissioned art be, it could require local artists? So that then that revenue would stay local and support our artists? Could that be written into the ordinance?
I am not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I'm kind of looking at our city attorney on that question, but.
So I do have the attorney on the line that actually assisted staff with drafting the ordinance, and I can get him on in a second to ask his legal opinion about that specific question. But just as a practical matter, I would say that that's going to probably limit the pool of artists from which you are sort of trying to get a project going. And I know that in other jurisdictions that I've worked at, it's not as easy to get art projects commissioned because there aren't artists that are willing to do the work sometimes, so. But if you hold on a second, I will get him on, or I'll actually text him and see if we can get your question specifically answered.
I think it's a fair question. I know that probably we could, that could be worked out in public arts commission, for lack of a better word. But I do think it's kind of along the question about how we want to be able to develop this, I think it's a fair question, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, thank you. So just a couple more questions. So I wanted to ask, the slide where you showed what the requirements were to pay the fee, where it said remodel two hundred and fifty thousand? Oh, there it is. Remodels with valuation of two hundred and fifty thousand or more. Is that the value of the property at two hundred and fifty or more? Or is that the anticipated cost for the actual remodeling?
That's the anticipated cost for the actual remodeling.
Okay, so, and that would be commercial or residential?
Correct, so all of the types of units that are listed on this slide here. So it could be residential development projects. And again, that's only for projects with five or more units. Or commercial, industrial, and public building development projects.
Okay, so, okay, so the remodel would be, the project itself is evaluated at two hundred and fifty or more?
The remodel project, correct, yes.
Okay, that's great, thank you. And then, I think the last thing, it was more of a comment. I was really happy to see that you built into the ordinance that you could use the fund to pay administrative costs. And I think that's really important, that you do account for, you know, you're going to start a new program. And it sounds like a very robust program that's going to include, you know, a long life cycle, community engagement, you know. And I think it's important that if you're going to be expanding your team to support this, that you do so appropriately staffed, right? So that you don't burden, overburden your existing staff. So I'm really happy to see that that's built in, and I'm very much in support. And you have to build capacity when you're going to expand. And so I'm really happy to see that, and I'm very much in support of that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I haven't gotten a response from the attorney because I'm sure he's listening to the, watching the video and listening to the, to council meeting, or the planning commission meeting as best he can. So if you, if you're okay with it, I'll unmute his phone and ask him the question directly.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Hessinger?
Yes.
Hi, I have you on speakerphone in the planning commission meeting. So we have a question for you about whether or not the ordinance affected for projects to only local.
I'm not aware of any legal prohibition on imposing such a limitation. However, I think in a smaller community, that would severely limit the pool of available artists and similarly limit the types of art that might be available.
Advisory board, steward? Projects that are.
Yes, yeah, so that's exactly the process that we are planning to establish, that that advisory committee would take every project that is funded by city dollars and take all, so for example, if we have, say, a new mural that we want to put on the city plaza, we would put out a request for proposals. And then that advisory committee would be the first round, the first kind of go-round of looking at those proposals that are received. And then we'd make a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval. So I think kind of along the lines of the question that you're asking in terms of kind of local preference, there could be some, say, like additional points that could be given to proposals that come from local artists in that process.
The question was more specific to. Developing some aspect, like that was more my question. Can we, can we have some type of purview over that work?
Again, I, yeah.
I mean, the, when, when the developer selects whether or not they're going to pay an in-lie fee or when they're going to?
No, I'm saying like, okay, so let's say a developer is going to create, I'm trying to find where it was. There it is, okay. They're gonna, they're gonna commission original artwork for the development project, for example. Will the advisory board have any purview over that work?
The advisory committee likely would not for that kind of scenario. So what happens now is whenever there's art that's being proposed on private property or on private commercial property, an application comes in, we'd first go to the planning commission actually for review and then come to the Parks Department and the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval. We don't typically take a look at, you know, who, like, who the artist is and whether they're local or not, or that sort of thing. It's basically just kind of a cursory review to ensure that the art that's being proposed is compliant with our current guidelines as set by the city council. And that, again, kind of, planning doesn't have any issues with what's being proposed and that sort of thing.
That's really helpful, what you said in terms of it's private property. That helps me understand, so thank you.
But just to clarify, the art would be submitted as part of the application? So the planning commission would have it before them as part of the application for the overall project, correct?
Correct.
I, I, why the point, where is it? Point, what was the percentage again? Point two-five?
Yes.
Why not higher?
That is, that's a great question as well. So we've looked at several different scenarios. The quarter percent, based on a few sample projects that we've looked at from recent history, would line up kind of more or less with some of our other fees. For example, our park fees that are, that were proposed prior to this item. We also took a look at kind of a good starting point, and again, again, to your point of kind of balancing the need to not discourage development in our community and land on a fee that is kind of palatable to our development community, but also kind of reaches the goals of our intent of the program. We felt that a quarter of percent is kind of a good place to land and to start, mainly due to the fact that it's in line with many of our other development fees in terms of kind of price tag.
I understand that, I just see that the city of Salinas has a point five percent. And so, you know, what can I say?
Good question.
Developers are going to be paying the other fee.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I'm, I have a different philosophy on development though than I think other members of the board.
Thank you. Any other clarifying or comments or questions? I have a question. Would you be able to walk us through, or walk me through for my own benefit, the applicant process between a public space versus a private building?
Sure, so I'll start with the public space because that's probably a little bit easier. So as we get to a place where there's money in the cultural fund to be able to commission art in our public spaces, what would generally happen is that we as a city would issue a request for proposals that would basically be a call for artists to propose an art project in, you know, whatever space that particular proposal kind of speaks to. So again, kind of using the example of, say, a. the example of, of, say, a mural here in the city plaza, or in, in the civic plaza. We put that out for proposals for a certain amount of time, and then, come, come the deadline, we, we collect all of those proposals, and then pull together our advisory committee to, to review those proposals. And, and we, we review those proposals against the, the rating criteria that we established in that, in that request for proposals. And then that committee would, would then select, you know, which, which proposal they, they would like to recommend to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They then recommend that to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then we would work with the artist to, to enter into an artist agreement that kind of outlines the parameters, and deals with liability, and also speaks to compensation for, for the artist, as well as timelines and, and so forth. And then, once that's approved, and we get through all the other hoops, you know, if there's building permits involved, if it's not a, if it's not a, a mural, and it's a sculpture, or something like that, then we'd, we'd have to work through all that as well. And then we, we move to proceed. So, that's if, if it's a public project, and, and kind of funded by the cultural fund in, in a, a public space. If it, if it happens to be, kind of one of the examples that's on the screen right now, where, say, a private developer commissioned, or wants to commission artwork on their development site, as was alluded to previously, when that, that developer comes and, and proposes their project, they, they should also come with their proposal to, to meet this, this public art requirement, and, and include their proposal for, for public art at their development site, if they, if that's what they, they choose. So, the, the planning department would, would intake that application, and review it for any requirements that, that they, that they foresee, and then they would pass that, that project for approval to the Parks and Community Services Department. We take kind of a cursory view of it, and then bring that to the Parks and Recreation Commission for, for, for review. So, like I mentioned earlier, the Parks and Rec Commission is, is right now the, the, the body that's, that's responsible for approval of those types of projects. So, they, they can either approve or, or deny approval of, of any projects that, that come through. And then, the appealing body is the city council. So, if, if a developer or anyone else would, you know, wants to appeal a decision of, of the commission, then they would then go to council for, for final determination.
Thank you. And my follow-up question is, as of now, currently, do the applicants, I'm, I'm assuming that the process is very different for public space, public murals, murals. Is there, uh, would there be any fees? Or are there any fees right now for artists who put up their artwork in public spaces?
So, for, I'm gonna kind of answer your, your question in reverse. So, if, if there's, if there's, say, a mural on, on private commercial property, then there is, there is a fee attached to the application. But if the proposed artwork is, is to be placed on public property, so on, on any of our public spaces, or in, in any of our parks, for example, that, that fee is, is not applicable.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you. Um, moving on to a public hearing on item seven B, which is this discussion. I will now open up the public hearing.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jim Brown, and I serve as the Executive Director of Arts Council Santa Cruz County. The city of Watsonville is, is, is home to a very rich arts and cultural community. Despite limited access to funding, space, and other resources, artists and arts organizations have done their work in this community to make it more vibrant and welcoming place. Over the past few years, recognizing the arts council's inequity of our funding practices, we have begun shifting resources and attracting new ones to invest in, in the city, in arts in this city. And I urge you to join the arts council in investing in this incredible creative community by supporting this percent for the arts initiative. After a historic pandemic that's forced us all to isolate each other from one another, there could be no better time to invest in the arts, which always bring us together. So, please join 48 other jurisdictions in California, including the city and county of Santa Cruz, the city of Capitola, in supporting a percent for the arts in Watsonville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I, my name is Mireya Gomez Contreras. This is my son, Sergio. My daughter, Camila, is behind me. They're both really tired, so I'm glad to be at this point in the meeting. First, I wanted to thank staff for your report, and I wanted to appreciate the, the, well, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm here tonight to speak as a resident of Watsonville. I live at 226 East Lake Avenue, as a mama that's raising two babies here, and as a lover of the arts, and as a creative thinker. I wanted to appreciate the way staff has been really including community voices and artist voices in the thinking and, and kind of the, the design of the ordinance. I think, as a resident of Watsonville, I wanted to mention a couple of places where I recently experienced public art, and it really was a, a, an unforgettable experience. First, at Dominican Hospital, they have a chessboard, which is a giant, you know, like, the pieces of the chess are, like, as big as my son, and they had just had so much fun. And it's big, you know, so, when I think of the arts, I think about perspective, and perspective being something that is a, is a way of being in the world, and a way that we can be with each other, that, that really, to me, only grandparents and arts, the arts can teach that, you know. The other experience I had with art recently was at Stanford Hospital. My husband was ill, and we walked down the halls, and again, such amazing color on the walls, and such a, a diversity of shape. And there is where I, I realized kind of the versatility of arts, and I think staff has alluded to the ways in which public art can be temporary or permanent, outdoor or indoor. Oops.
How do you do that?
It can vary in size, and it, it can be interactive. I, in particular, really appreciate functional art, and at one time I experienced, and it was in LA. Again, these are all experiences that I've had outside of Watsonville. I have deep roots here. I want to be able to stand in front of, like, a, a huge strawberry at some point in my, before, you know, when my kids are still in town, and be able to say, like, wow, you know, who made that? And what does this strawberry mean to Watsonville? And, you know, yeah, there's just so much story, you know, and so much potential richness that I think this ordinance can bring in terms of funding experiences, and experiences, memories, you know, the oohs and the ahs. I think I wanted to make sure to say that it also, I think, has an incredible amount of potential around building the, the economy in town. I've seen it, again, you know, festivals, and at many other, even neighboring cities and counties, and I, I really would love that for, for our town. So, I urge you tonight to accept the recommendation. I, in particular, I want to appreciate you, Commissioner Rojas, for prioritizing local arts, and appreciate you, Commissioner Dodge, for, for really uplifting the way in which artists also need to get paid, adjust, you know, wage or salary for their work. So, thank you. Thank you.
There you go. Best that you can.
Hi, I'm Judy Stabeel, and I've been in the Pajaro Valley since the mid-eighties. I'm an artist. I'm an arts advocate. I'm a volunteer for Pajaro Valley Arts, and have been since the mid-nineties. Art is my passion, and I'm so pleased to see so many passionate people for the arts in front of me. Staff has done an incredible job of including community comment in this whole process, really taking in what the community has to say, adjusting to the ordinances, to what the community has said. And I really trust their process. And I think what this ordinance does is provide a structure for fees that will allow a consistency in the arts, rather than, oh, you got a project here. Oh, well, you know, somebody wants a project over here. This will give a consistent funding source, and then the arts plan will give the structure on how those funds are spent equitably within our community. And I think that's a really important key, is the equitable expenditure of the monies. And as, as has been pointed out, artists should be paid for their work. They should be recognized for their work. And I think that this does it. You, you've got it all here. And yeah, there's still work to be done with the plan for the future, but I think that you have the team here that can do that. And, well, I know you have the team here that can do that. So, I urge your support. Public art is something that's really dear to me. Many of the slides that you saw tonight are projects that were spearheaded by Pajaro Valley Arts. You saw artwork from kids at Ramsey Park. Those murals, two of them were by high, Watsonville High School students, and one of them was a student from Cesar Chavez. And so, it's not just professional artists that you're, would be supporting, but the idea of growing artists, and growing this whole creative process within our community. So, that's what I look for you to do, is to help the creative health of this community. Thank you very much.
My name is Jacenya Camacho-Bautista. I'm an arts administrator at the Arts Council, but first and foremost, I'm here as a Watsonville community member. I grew up here in Watsonville, and so I, through, you know, public, public art, I was able to learn to appreciate art. I walked past a mural in my neighborhood growing up, and now I continue to attend cultural events at the plaza here in Watsonville, where I'm able to experience the arts and see other community members express themselves through dance, music, and all kinds of arts, beautiful art. And so, although the arts have survived here in Watsonville, I think it's time for the city of Watsonville to catch up to other neighboring cities by adopting the public arts program where we can create more funds to, to support the arts and make sure that they thrive here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? I, I have a question. Can I ask staff a question? Is that still, or is that closed? Okay, thank you. Being that there is no more public comment, I will now close the public comment, and I have a question for staff. I know Commissioner Rojas mentioned about local artists, but is there any way it could be prioritized? Or maybe that's just common sense already that I'm mentioning at all. Can we, can we prioritize a local artist versus maybe someone who's not from the area? Say, there were a few entries. Would that be possible, Abel?
Yeah, so I, I believe that for, for art that is commissioned by the city and placed in public art places, that, that there could be, I think, I, I mentioned previously, that there could be a means through, say, say, like, the rating system, when we receive proposals, to give preference to artists that are, are local, by that selection committee.
And my other question is, with the, with this public art program, artists who would like to add, say, a mural to a private business, would there be any funds to eradicate the fees that they need to do in order to go through that, the application process?
Yeah, so I, I think that question has come up quite a bit as of recently also. And, and I think, I, I imagine that what will likely happen is that will come up also as we're developing our public arts master plan. And one thing I envision that that could happen is that through that plan, we could establish money that's set aside for grant funding, for, say, like, the waiver of, of that application fee, or even to, to pay for the procurement of art on, on commercial spaces. So, you know, there could be a grant program, for example, where a business could, could apply for, for funds from the cultural fund to, to add a mural to their space, or, or other kind of public art.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Dodge?
Thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution recommending city council adopt the public art ordinance, adding chapter 20 to title eight of the Watsonville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Row? Yes, deliberation?
I, I wanted to make a comment during this time of deliberation, a couple of comments, actually. I, I wanted to commend the, in the definitions section, you have a list of the types of projects, and I, I really wanted to commend whoever wrote this, of the diversity of types of projects. I thought this was really neat, that you, you have, you know, everything from sculpture, monuments, and fountains, arches, collage print, wood, metal, gla, I mean, everything, because, you know, we, we've been talking about a lot of public art, and we've been talking about murals and things, but public art is so much more, and I, and it even extends into gardens. So, I thought that was really neat to have it be so, such an extensive definition, and to include all those different varieties of artwork, because, you know, a beautiful garden is every bit as much an art piece as is a mural, and I think it's really neat to, to be able to add that diversity to our community. The other thing, I wanted to make a comment about the local artists that people have been talking about. And I'm not sure what, if people are referring to specifically Watsonville local, Santa Cruz County local. I wanted to point out that the mural, or the mosaic project for the parking garage, it, so, the, the coordinator doesn't live in Watsonville specifically, but most of the artists that are working on the project, I, I don't think she does, does she? She actually lives in Watsonville? But she lives in the unincorporated county, doesn't she? Oh, she does. Okay.
Small town, everybody knows.
I thought she lived just, anyway. But there are so, what I wanted to say was, even if we, you know, choose an artist from, I don't know, Corleto's or something, somewhere outside Watsonville, we still, the artist still could have other people working on the piece that are local. So, I, I just wanted to say that local is, could be a, a larger definition of who works on the piece. The sculpture is, that's out in Sierra Zul, okay, Sierra Zul's not in the city of Watsonville, but a lot of the sculptures, that's kind of a public space for art. And so, so different examples of art. And I really, I, I think it's so amazing that we are dedicating a funding source for the arts. This is, you know, having been a member of the Pajaro Valley Arts Council for, I don't know, 15 years or something, it's, I'm sorry, finally. So, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kim. Oh, yes, Commissioner Dodge?
I, I too would like to thank, thank, thank the staff, thank my friend Judy for all the years of her dedication to our community. But I also want to include performing arts, you know. I, I'm, but none of the local nonprofits would give me a job when I had four kids, but I'm not bitter or bringing it up or anything, you know. I, 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 I worked concerts, productions, punk, skate, reggae, every kind of show you would imagine. And no matter what show that I worked, from classical to skate, or punk, or thrash, there was always people from Watsonville in attendance in the, in, in these, in these shows. I'm glad that the gentleman from the Arts Council did the mea culpa, and talked about the lack of, of investment in our community over the years, you know. It's 2022, I'm all about going forward. Again, I just wanted to mention it, that I was, you know. And because of performing arts, I do, I have, I'm still involved in concerts and productions, and I've had to take my businesses out of the city and out of the Pajaro Valley for years. And so, I'm hoping that, that when we talk about, under the performing arts section, that you have any form of rhythmic movement, music or concerts, musical performance with live musicians and our singers. What, I agree with the, what Commissioner was saying earlier, that it, public art involves a variety of things. But I also know that music touches the soul, you know? What little soul I have left, you know? It still touches, it still touches the soul, and, and, and I think that, you know, a lot of times And 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 I think that, you know, a lot of times, you know, I I know for myself and others, we could bring up different types of entertainment to the Watsonville. It's always been the challenge of a lack of venue and a challenge of a lack of space. So I'm glad we're addressing all these things this evening and I'm hoping it expands from the dialogue that we've had tonight. There, I understand the need to be able to support residents of the nine five oh seven six in the Paharo Valley. But I think that, you know, I'm hoping those are policies and recommendations that listening to this commission that can move forward. So again, thank you. Don't mean to be petty. But I am. So thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great. On that note, piggyback really quickly on performing arts, we have a really a great hidden gem, I want to say, east of us, El Teatro Campesino. You know, as a past ensemble member, they would love to, you know, reach out and really impact Watsonville as they have done before. So I think it'd be a great, I can already foresee future productions, so, yeah. Awesome. With that, roll call.
Dodge?
Yes.
Dorantes Polito?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Thank you. With that, we have a report from the secretary.
Got a quick report. I I think maybe it's time to introduce this wonderful person sitting next to me here.
I already called her out a couple of times.
This is Denise Bazano. She is going to be representing our city attorney law firm of Burke William Sorenson as our attorney for the planning commission and all things planning going forwards. The city contracted with Burke William Sorenson. A contract became effective January first of this year. So we're happy to welcome you to your first in-person meeting.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
So, yeah, it's a big change for us. And yeah, it's wonderful to have you, so, yeah. And I really don't have anything else to report tonight.
All right.
Yeah, great to see you all in person again.
All right, with that, I adjourn the meeting. Motion to, our next planning commission meeting will be held on April fifth, twenty twenty two, would that, do I motion to adjourn the meeting? No? I just adjourned the meeting? All right, a meeting adjourned. All right.